...and more importantly than anything else, able to shut out that outstanding Pittsburgh lineup for seven innings. Able to do some of the things that brought them to the championship in the American League. Able to do some things with the Pittsburgh Pirates outstanding pitching as captain of doing throughout the first six innings. Game seven nineteen seventy-one World Series. I can't wait for it to start and I'm absolutely committed. Good to have you come, Charles and Brooks. There's always pressure in the World Series, all-star game. Having such a big producer in myself for the memorial, but Charles has never been to the seventh game. How are you feeling?
Well, I feel fine. I mean, I'm a little excited and uh like to say you can really feel it inside. And uh just the crowd here make you feel it inside. I just hope we uh have a good ballgame. Entire season playoffs, spring training, almost up to one game, seventh game of World Series. I guess that's what they're supposed to be, everybody, but uh it's gonna be uh an exciting ballgame and uh we worked really hard. And uh we were number one last year. We got a T S B number one this year and that's what we're gonna shake for all of you. Brooks, Rob, thank you so much.
And all right, we don't want to stop yet. Welcome to all the ones who are recording right now. For the second video of the nineteen seventy-one World Series. Here are the events. First, the National League champion Pittsburgh Pirates. Here is the manager of the Pirates, number forty, Danny Bertall. Danny Bertall, playing second base, number thirty, Josh. Danny second, playing centerfield, number fifteen, Gene Klein. Danny third, playing right field, number twenty-one, Roberto Hernandez. Danny fourth, playing first base, number seven, Bob Robertson.
This is the call made in order and just like in any good ballgame, we'll start out with a flying salute. Uh Danny.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, do we have any additions or relations to the event?
No sir.
No.
We have a motion to approve the amendment from the previous meeting.
Motion accepted.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Okay, if a few of you are wondering about what this is all about, we've got a real celebrity here tonight that we'd like to honor. In recognition of Allegheny County native and baseball great Bobby Robertson. We wish to welcome all who came to this special recognition event. Bobby Robertson had an exemplary professional baseball career. He was an outstanding athlete in high school, starring not only in baseball, but also in basketball and soccer. A few of his baseball milestones. Bobby played in the first ever night game of the World Series in nineteen seventy-one. He played and scored in the final game at Pittsburgh's famed Forbes Field before a sellout, standing room only crowd in nineteen seventy. Forbes Field had been home to nearly five thousand baseball games over sixty-one years. Bobby also hit the first home run ever hit into the left field upper deck of Pittsburgh's new Three Rivers Stadium. Now here's Bobby Robertson to share some of his personal moments.
Somebody told me I've got a top rated, so that's, that's what I gotta do. First of all, I'd like to recognize my friends and my family for coming here tonight. Um over there is Charlie Thomas. He was my manager, guy I patented. He's a building. You boys ever look for, looking for a new management, right? There he is. Carla, his wife, and then I got Tyler. Tyler's a good basketball player up at Bell. Uh things, well, we'll get into that. But I wish you luck. Maybe next year you can get on that team and show them what you got. So thank you for showing up. We have Danny Carter and we have Betty, his wife from Mount Savage. We do some karaoke together sometimes and dogs bark and all that stuff. And then my lovely wife Carolyn. She was a good baseball lady. She kept me straight all them years. Uh we had the kids, Janine and Julie in Pittsburgh and then we'd come back here doing the off season. So uh she took the kids a lot of times in April when I told them to stay home and she'd bundle them up and go to the ballgame. So I thank her for all those years and all that kind of stuff. And then my oldest daughter, Janine, I won't tell them how old you are. Tim's not here, Tim's sitting. Uh I think they're waiting on the couch or something to pick you up. So I told her, you know, excuse you. And then you have Caleb. Caleb, uh good baseball player, good basketball. He's now going to Fort Hill. And then I have Colton. Colton can hit them like Pappy used to hit them, high and far. He plays for Vazani down at ACC. He's went to a few tryouts. Philadelphia has their antlers out in the morning and all that kind of stuff. And uh they're good athletes. I have seven, seven grandchildren by the way. They're all uh, they're all good athletes. I guess they come out of pretty good voice somewhere down, you know, along the way. And I got Julie. Uh she's my youngest daughter. Uh she's out in Mount Joy with uh, let's see if I can remember all these names. We've got Grace. Grace has been scouted. She's, she's in the ninth grade, but uh they play field hockey out there. So there's some scouts from these colleges are looking at her now. And then Lily is in the softball. And then I got Emma. She's in the basketball softball. And then Christian, he's seven. Uh he's gonna be a good uh, I don't know if he's gonna go for football or not, but he's a good little baseball player. So they're out in Mount Joy. They couldn't be here tonight, but that's, that's okay. So I appreciate you all showing up and uh this ain't gonna take long because I'm a man of very few words, right Dave? Oh, there's one gentleman here I'd like to uh, Joe Carter. He's one of the reasons why I'm standing up here tonight, because he was my high school coach. And I liked the way he coached because back then we did, you know, we, we learned the basic fundamentals of the game of baseball. I think, I think coaches sometimes nowadays, you really have to get back to the basics of the game. And there's some kids that are better than other kids. And if you can go to those kids that, that sometimes don't play regularly or stuff like that. Where you can build confidence in them to let them know that they still belong on that team and you can work with them. And I was one of those guys. My, my brothers wouldn't let me play with them whenever I was younger for the hit ball as part of thing. They did, but I figured, uh, I'm gonna fix it. I practiced a lot. And remember how you used to choose up and you had to bat and then, then you choose up and who gets picked first and stuff like that? Well, after a while, I was pretty much the first one to, to get picked. But I lived in Old Row, very proud of Mount Savage. Um I learned a lot from, from Mount Savage and uh especially the Joe Carter because I remember I used to have to walk to school and coming down after school one night. I asked Mr. Carter, I said, "Mr. Carter, how do I make that baseball team yours?" And he said, "Uh, you just gotta practice young man." And I said, "Okay, that's, I'll do that." But my favorite sport was basketball. Baseball was not my favorite sport to play in. I did all right with it. One of the, my old row up there, of course, we had no run of water and stuff like that when I was growing up. We had a five gallon bucket upstairs we used in winter time. And I remember Joe Consoli, Joe Consoli and Sid Thrift come to, come to my house in Mount Savage and uh Joe asked me, said, "Bobby," he said, "I gotta go pee." I said, "You gotta go pee, do you hear?" I said, "You see that white building right down that, next to that creek?" He said, "You go right down there and help yourself." It doesn't get me to have the run of water and stuff. Of course, he passed away, but uh he, he remembered that and then when he gave his speeches to the, the young kids and stuff like that in my league baseball, he always brought that up. And he was able to pee at Bobby Robertson's outhouse. When I signed with the Bonnies and stuff like that, I was able to put down a down payment from mom and dad to go into a house that had run of water. I thought that was, I thought that was pretty neat. I used to like to go to Ralph Wilson's house up there and uh I said, "Ralph, I gotta go to the bathroom." I already didn't have to go to the bathroom, but I went in there and kinda looked at that remote and did my thing right there. And alls I had to do was push that little handle. Man, that water. Man, I'm in high heaven now. So I learned a lot from Mr. Carter. Uh he, he, he influenced me a lot and he taught me a lot of things and uh he's not here tonight. I, I would assume that he skipped and stuff like that. His father, he was so young. I'm thinking of me and all that kind of stuff. And I'd like to thank you all for having this day for me. That's, that's pretty neat. The Dapper Dan's were, were nice and stuff like that and uh, but I remember, because a lot of people, Bob Prince one time, trying to screw the picture. I was born in Frostburg. Well, we had a game of the, game of the week and I remember they sat on the bench and told him that I was born and raised in Frostburg, but I was raised in Mount Savage. Well, he'd come on the radio or whatever the TV was and said I was from some Frostburg, Maryland. I don't know how that went over, but that's the story on that. But after the, the final game of the nineteen seventy-one World Series there, people was asking, "Well, how come I wasn't up on stage and all that kind of stuff?" Well, Suda Kay and Van Roby was there and I figured, well, they come in and I took them back to the trainers room. Because I felt that I owed them something. Because Suda wrote a lot of nice articles and Van had me on the radio and stuff. So instead of me out there being on national television, I took the two boys back in the trainers room and uh Suda interviewed me and Van Roby had me on the radio. So my accomplishments and stuff that I feel is, is just not for, for Mount Savage. It was for the whole tri-state area because it brought interest and stuff. And I think that's what I'm most proud of. And uh, you know, being surrounded with family and friends and things like that, it don't get any better. Now I'm uh, me and the wife up there, we're cutting some wood up and burning and stuff like that. I'm sort of retired. Still looking for work, but Dave called me up and told me I was gonna get this here and I'm too young to retire. And I said, "Well, if anything ever comes up in the tri-state area, you let me know." Because nobody's ever approached me in this area to do something either for the kids or whatever. And I really don't know the reason why. Um I, I can still say my ABC, though I have to say. So if anything ever does come up around here, you need an old part like myself. About to do some PR or any of that kind of stuff, I forgot my phone number. So I guess it's about that, but I'm proud of the kids here, Caleb and, and Colton. You keep up the, keep up the good work. And uh maybe one of these days you'll be standing up there, you know? So I thank you all for, for coming. Like I said, this is pretty, pretty quick. But there's memories that I have in, in, in baseball. I, you know, I remember going out to Williams Road and my grandma had me out there on the weekends and we'd go out and eat. And I remember laying there on the couch, listening to Clemente and Stargel. All of these guys and then all of a sudden I find myself on the same bench, running out on the same field. Clemente's here and I'm going first, he's going right field. It don't get any better than that. You know, the good Lord has blessed me in so many ways. And uh, you know, I'm just proud of uh, just being able to put a, put a uniform on. The injury's coming, you know, I couldn't do anything about that, but uh my career was cut pretty short. They called me the next Rob Kind. Well, that, that could have been. But there's one thing I wanna end on. You, not on this film, but somebody keeps talking about me missing a bunt sign. Everybody, police came back there and there's this, you can't say it. Showed up, buddy. Used to be in Maryland State Police and stuff. But anyway, I remember uh back then, now I forgot what I was gonna say. You know, when you have to write down where you hide Easter eggs. Just I, I don't even know what I was about to say. Come back there and say even that just took me. Well, but anyway, I guess it wasn't that anymore.
Clemente was on second and you were on third.
Ah, yeah, very well, thank you. Now you can, now the boys are up. Now, you gotta understand, we're two games down in the World Series and we're playing in Pittsburgh. And I'm thinking, well, okay, I just got done being a platoon with Oliver. I just had twenty-eight homeruns, I guess it was. And drove in eighty-two runs or whatever. So you got Willie on first and you got Clemente on second. I ain't never run in my entire life. Right, Colton? So on the end, on deck circle, that's what I always tell Colton kid. That's where you prepare yourself to go get. Nowadays, they step out of the box five yards and they get back in there and adjust their gloves and all that kind of stuff. Watch these World Series of the guy, we had a purpose. Get in there, hit pitcher, throw the, throw the ball to the plate. You understand what I'm saying? So I'm there and I walked over there. I had no idea why y'all were stitching. And I looked down at third base, I didn't know where I looked. And all of a sudden he threw me a, a screwball, which is the pitcher I guess you're gonna hang on your wall here. And uh I hit a three-run homer to right field. No right hander here has ever hit a ball to right center that far. So when I was coming around the bases and stuff like that, I went back and I sit down on the, on the bench and Massey said, "Bobby." He said, "You know a bunt sign was on?" I won't tell you what I told Massey. I said, "What?" So I looked over at Bertall and he has his hat on, he's a beautiful belly, he just laughing. So as the story goes, a lot of reporters have asked me, "Did you get fined for that?" I said, "No, he didn't, he didn't find me or anything." And uh Steve Blas told him, he said, "Well, if it's fined, if you pay it, I'll pay it." But Steve was a pitcher that day. So how all that come about? What if I seen that bunt sign? What would happen, me trying to get a bunt down on the astroturf, trying to get Clemente to third and Willie to second base? So I think there was a little miscommunication going on there. So people always ask me, "Did you miss the bunt sign?" No, I didn't see it. Sort of. There I am. There I am, not a wink. Because we had to get some going. If we get it down, we'll send you nuts. So it, it worked out good and then the playoffs, you know, he did three homeruns in San Francisco and Carolyn was there. That was a good day. And I almost had the fourth. Uh he hit it off the top of his fence out there left center. Willie Mays come to me later and said, "Bobby, you just run me the dub." I just said, "Willie, I just seen your number twenty-four just run all over the place out there trying to catch your balls I hit out there." So I could have had four, but then I come back to Pittsburgh and hit the one off of Juan Marceau. And then I hit two in the World Series, one off McNally and the other was off of, oh yeah. So I got a lot of memories. Some I can remember, some I can't. I remember hitting some long homeruns around here. People said I did anyway. The one in particular was one, I guess my family didn't have enough money to give me uh spikes, so I wore tennis shoes. And I remember playing up in Allegheny when they played over there next to the school. And some right hander pitcher, it had rained that day and it was pretty slippery. But I hit one off that school from back there, you know how they back in that corner they had it? And it, the only thing I seen when I hit it to the left fielder was just, just kept going. And here I go, running around their bases, just slipping and sliding. And I made it. But I got a chance to play in, in, in the Penn Mar League. I think I was only fifteen years old. But that made me better because I was playing against guys that was much better than I was. So that really, that really helped me out a lot. So I'm gonna shut up now. It's about, you know, within the meeting. I just wanted to say thank you.
I have to bring one up here.
Oh, okay. I gotta go that way. Oh, I wanted to say, I wanted to mention this because Ruth Sport came down to Mount Savage. Uh Danny don't know anything about this, but they come down, uh and we're gonna have this on television, when I don't know. But they was at the house, they seen the trophy room that uh Janine and Carolyn had fixed up. And then I said, "Well, let's go up and see Joe Carter, my high school coach." So we went up there and Joe was sitting in there, so they interviewed him and then I took him down in Old Row and showed where I grew up and stuff and uh, I thought that was pretty neat. But the last person here, Chris Miller, I forgot to mention his name on the Ruth Sports. He's a, he's a baseball coach for Donegal out in Mount Joy. He does, does a great job. And he does a good job with the kids. That means I don't have to go up there because if you get too many misses in the uh, the puddle here and people get confused and turn on, then I'm supposed to be proud of you keep up the good work. Take care of them, mommy. All right, here it goes.
Okay, we get an official proclamation for Bobby here. Whereas Allegheny County native Robert Eugene Bobby Robertson was born in Frostburg, called Mount Savage home during his formative years and after his professional baseball career concluded, returned to his roots here in Allegheny County. And whereas Bobby Robertson was a professional baseball player for eleven seasons, played eight hundred twenty-nine games and was recognized as the Mount Savage strong boy, who could hit a ball out of any park, including the Yellowstone. And whereas, as a number one card, Bobby debuted in the major leagues on September eighteenth nineteen sixty-seven. Spent one season with the Seattle Mariners and concluded his career as a Toronto Blue Jay on June twenty-third nineteen seventy-nine. And whereas a natural athlete and a veteran of the United States Marine Corps, Bobby Robertson played with all famed notable Roberto Clemente, Willie Stargel and Bill Mazeroski. And whereas Bobby hit three homeruns for the world champion Pittsburgh Pirates in the nineteen seventy-one World Series and caught the laugh out to the nineteen seventy-one World Series. And whereas Bobby had postseason homerun record that stood for many years and was involved in three no hitters during his career. And whereas Bobby Robertson brought and continues to bring positive national media attention to Allegheny County. Now therefore, we, the Allegheny County Commission, wish to highlight the life of Robert Eugene Bobby Robertson and proclaim the opening day of the two thousand fifteen baseball season, Monday, April the sixth, for our star Bobby Robertson Day in Allegheny County and urge all individuals to reflect on the achievements and contributions of this native of Allegheny County. This is signed by all three county commissioners, William Valentine, Creed Brody and Jack H.
Thank you.
Uh, that's okay, we don't. Stay up here for a few pictures.
All right, here we go. That World Series right here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, there's a lot of great ballplayers out there. They got one of these, you know, I'm very proud of it. It's pretty neat.
Thanks, John. Okay. We got something else. You see a empty net over there on the wall?
That's it.
We got something we gotta add on.
There it is.
There you go, Bobby.
There it is.
There it is.
There it is. They uh, Tim Carney, I forgot to mention his name. He came up to the house and see some of the stuff I had buried in it. And I told him, the picture here is the fun view. On my, on my baseball card it has it from the side view. When I was inducted into the Maryland Hall of Fame, they gave me a real big picture of this and they took a, you know, a photo or something off this. You took care of that, boy. So, and also the Western Pennsylvania, uh in the Hall of Fame up there. That's pretty neat.
Hold that up.
All right. I don't think I can miss it. Never know. There we go. I don't have the light like this up here. Don't fall.
Slide to the left just a little bit.
Hey, I forgot to mention my, uh, see what I'm telling you about right now, we hide Easter eggs. Alexa, much player, civic, she, uh, she's going through Prosper and, uh, I know Tim's got a lot of stocks, but she wants to be adopted. So, uh, she's pretty smart. She's a, she's a good, uh, well, she's an excellent student, but she was a good softball or basketball or volleyball player. So, we just keep them, keep them running. Now, I'm looking forward to these two and Alexa to bring me somewhere in the woods. So, did I miss anybody now, woman?
So, granted, we got lots of room, because I know you're very proud of your grandchildren, for lots more pictures, so, sir, we certainly look forward to that. Let's have a big round for Bobby.
I brought some pictures here, if anybody wants a picture for the younger days and stuff like that, they're all signed, so if anybody wants that, they're right there.
Thank you.
Hey, folks, you got my phone, uh, phone number now, right?
Tim Carney, thank you very much for all your help holding this day on.
Okay. Bye, do mail. Bye. You're welcome. There you go, man. See you all. I'll be up there one week soon as well. Good to see you again. See you all. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll, uh, invite another Allegheny County star to the front of the room, uh, Ms. Mary Bennett, to talk about telephone recycling.
Mount Savage did. Um, I just want to take a few minutes to announce some upcoming events in the recycling program. The one that Commissioner Valentine mentioned was the telephone book recycling campaign. This has been going on for twenty-three years now and this is the twenty-third year. And I'd like to thank the commissioners for allowing us to participate in this event with the Board of Education and the Solid Waste Management Board. Uh, last year, the students recycled nine thousand four hundred and sixty-nine telephone books, kept them from going into the landfill. And it also helped the county reach its mandated goal of twenty percent from their own Department of Environment. Um, only Allegheny County telephone books can be accepted. One year, we had some real unhoused students that brought truckload back from one of the other counties, overloaded the Board of Education, they were, they were a little befuddled. So, um, this is in recognition of Earth Day, which is April twentieth. Uh, the campaign began Monday, March twenty-third, and continues through Friday, April twenty-fourth. So, if you know any students, um, in the, the schools, public and private, um, give them your phone books, they're all usually, you know, looking for some, um, helping with the campaign. Um, cash, there's cash awards and the cash awards come from sponsors in the county. Waste Management has always been a good sponsor and Advanced Disposal. Uh, the first place prize is two hundred, the second, third, fourth, and fifth place prizes are, um, one fifty, one hundred, seventy-five, fifty. So, they, uh, the students are to buy, promote green environmental products within their school, maybe videos or planet free or something, you know, um, environmental. So, that's all. Oh, um, the students, actually middle and high school students who participate in the preparation, action, and reflection, um, of the telephone book campaign can earn service learning credits in the school. Kind of a reward project that promotes environmental awareness. On the, um, the second note, I would like to enter, uh, announce that the Allegheny County compost site, located at eleven seven hundred PPG Road in Cumberland, will begin the summer hours, Wednesday, April first, um, and those days are Wednesday through Sunday from ten a.m. to six p.m. Items accepted are brush, grass, leaves, limbs, no larger than four inches in diameter. Um, they do not accept stones and rubble, demolition, garbage tires, of course. And, um, residents of Allegheny County may take the compost free of charge. Uh, they do have to load it, there's no equipment available for loading. So, that's events for recycling.
Thank you, Ted.
Now, we have a, another guest here with us, uh, this evening, Mr. Chip DeCloud. He has a law firm that has been working, uh, on behalf of the Clean Chesapeake Coalition, which is a group of counties that got together about three years ago, looking for more effective and more efficient ways to, uh, help clean the Chesapeake Bay.
Thank you, commissioners, and, uh, what a treat it was to watch the, uh, recognition of your, uh, your favorite son there. I mean, that, that's special to be able to see a, um, celebrity like that in person, so that was great. Um, well, thank you for the opportunity to be here to update you on, uh, the activities of the Clean Chesapeake Coalition this current fiscal year. Um, and if I may, just, uh, just to give a little context on the Clean Chesapeake Coalition, um, and just by its name involving the Chesapeake Bay and, and here we are in Allegheny County quite some distance from the Chesapeake Bay. But three years ago, a group of counties joined forces and resources to begin, uh, to try to push back on some of the mandates and regulations that were coming down from the federal and state government that were very expensive and what the counties believed were unlikely to really improve water quality. Um, and, and it seemed like at that time, the local governments didn't have a very strong voice in be able to recommend and, and come up with new ideas on what they thought would work well with their local governments to do their part to help the environment and particularly the Chesapeake Bay. Since two thousand and ten, when the Environmental Protection Agency established what they call a pollution diet for the bay, the Chesapeake Bay TMDL, um, Maryland has been very aggressively pushing that program to approve the bay and for good reason, but Maryland decided to put the county governments at the front line of doing that. Uh, other bay states, Pennsylvania, New York, Virginia, the states are really doing that. Maryland pushed it down into the county governments and, and when that happened, county governments said, well, wait a minute. And the local officials in the counties said, wait, we might have some ideas that might work better before we just take blindly all these mandates that are very expensive. So, since the counties formed, uh, it started with seven counties, now there are ten, I'll name them quickly for the benefit of the audience. Uh, currently, in this fiscal year, Allegheny, Carroll, Frederick, Hartford, Cecil, Kent, Queen Anne, Dorchester, Caroline, and Wycomico County. Um, and I will run through, we, a memo random was just, uh, sent out by the chairman of the, um, the Coalition, Kent County Commissioner Ron Fitton, and I'll just run down the list because in that memo, Commissioner Fitton provided some highlights of activities that have been going on this year. Um, we have remained actively involved in the relicensing of Conawingo Dam, which is situated in the Lower Sesquahanna River. Uh, they are subject to relicensing by the federal government, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. We've been involved in that because the amount of pollution that's coming down the Sesquahanna and over the Conawingo Dam, um, is really eclipsing, uh, uh, some of the efforts Marylanders, all the counties are going to approve water quality. So, bringing attention to that issue because it really hasn't been seriously addressed. We were very closely monitoring, uh, a study called the Lower Sesquahanna River Watershed Assessment because that study was supposed to involve and inform the relicensing of the dam. Well, what happened is that study really wasn't done particularly well, um, and, and, and we were able to convince the Maryland Department of the Environment to require an additional study because that study didn't cut it. And frankly, that study was gerrymandered to come up with a result that basically said to the county governments, and I, I don't, basically said, shut up and just do your whips. Do the things we told you to do because dredging Conawingo Pond is, is, is not cost-effective. We're gonna continue to, to respectfully disagree with that analysis because there's no larger source of pollution to the bay than the Sesquahanna River. And we can do a lot in Maryland, all the counties, and even Allegheny County is under certain mandates to do things in the name of saving the bay. We can do all that and, and it may be in vain. Um, so, we followed that. We are involved in the Maryland Public Service Commission that is currently considering a merger between Exelon and PEPCA, two large utilities. The reason for the Coalition counties to be part of that is we think if the Public Service Commission is gonna approve that merger, they should look at Conawingo Dam as a facility of Exelon's and make sure that their environmental storage ship track record there is right. I mean, has that company operated and maintained that facility the best that they could? Uh, and so far to this day, the owner of Conawingo Dam has refused to do any kind of maintenance dredging of the reservoir above the dam and that's the problem. There's, there's eighty-five years of accumulated pollution sitting in, above that dam. And every time there's a storm, it, it really undermines the efforts Marylanders are doing to protect the bay. We, we initiated, uh, an, an initiative about, uh, getting more oysters in the Chesapeake Bay because of, as a best management practice, so people know a single oyster will filter fifty gallons of water a day. Um, EPA says if Maryland, if you could increase the population of oysters in the Chesapeake Bay tenfold, you would pull out ten million pounds of nitrogen a year. Maryland's goal under the Bay TMDL for nitrogen reduction is eleven point eight million. So, if you look at just dredging Conawingo Dam and stopping all the pollution that comes when there's a storm and you get more oysters in the bay, Maryland could meet all of its EPA goals that way. Now, those are two things the state of Maryland didn't consider when they were mandating on counties, here's how you're gonna save the bay, you're gonna regulate seppics, you're gonna put in various, or important, uh, uh, very expensive stormwater retrofits and things like that. And that's really the rub. These counties are trying to show some other alternatives to really helping the bay that maybe are more cost-effective and, and would produce more results. We're involved in legislation, things that are, are consistent with the Coalition mission. Um, we, we were very active in the phosphorus management tool regulation. I don't know how much up here, but the farming community was very upset about these proposed PMT regulations. Um, we, we were involved in that and in fact, uh, several of the agricultural advocacy groups were using research that we had done to show if you really want, if you're really concerned about phosphorus, look at what's going on at Conawingo, don't harass the farmers anymore. Maryland farmers have done more than any pollution sector can help the Chesapeake Bay. Um, and I don't know how much more that, that industry can take. And a lot of the Coalition counties have economies that are steeped in agriculture or commercial seafood harvesting. When you look at the harvester, the Maryland seal has a farmer and a waterman, the seafood harvester and the land harvester. Most of the Coalition counties have either one or both of those as an important part of their local economy. Um, and some meetings we've had that we think, uh, helped give the, give the Coalition counties a, a platform and they're always looking for a seat at the table because, again, county governments in Maryland, when it comes to the bay cleanup and how best to do it, local governments have had to fight tooth and nail to get a seat at the table. Uh, we've met with the new Attorney General, uh, Mr. Frosch, so he understands the issues of concern to the Coalition counties. Uh, we met with Lieutenant Governor Rutherford during the transition. Uh, and in fact, they were, they were forward to, to talking to the Coalition counties because Governor Hogan actually used a number of Coalition platforms during his campaign. Uh, and we were certainly happy to see that as, as sort of validation of the, of the message. Um, we, we also have met with Exelon and I mentioned earlier, Conawingo Dam, Exelon is the utility that owns Conawingo Dam. And I think the Coalition has been at this long enough now and has gotten the message out that, that, that Exelon thought it was important to meet with the Coalition and understand. And, and we actually came away from that meeting realizing there might be more we have in common than not. Um, you know, dredging Conawingo Dam, as good as that would be for the, for the, for downstream and the Maryland portion of the bay, it's not gonna happen anytime soon. So, the real discussion is what in the meantime do we do now that we know there's all this extra pollution coming because there's no traffic capacity? So, we like to believe that if we can continue to talk to Exelon, there might be things they're willing to do to show true environmental storage shift to help Maryland local governments because of what's happening up in the Lower Sesquahanna River. Um, and then finally, we recently met with the new Secretary of DNR, Mark Belton, of the Department of Natural Resources. That agency is very important to a number of the Coalition issues, uh, and, and we came away with that basically feeling like what a breath of fresh air, that actually local governments may have a shot at having a, a realist's voice and seat at the table under the new administration. Now, these things change too, um, but, but at least we feel like, you know, hey, maybe the message is out there and now there's a, there's a role for local governments to have some good input and, and, and not be subject to some cost inefficient mandates that really aren't gonna do much to help water quality. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and I appreciate the opportunity that I've taken off.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll move along to item number four. Chase, you better please.
Evening, commissioners. Sorry, I don't have any video for you. Any sports, just taxes? Anything exciting out of the finance office, any short clips?
No, we're not allowed to have exciting.
Okay. Pretty good. Tonight is our constant yield, uh, hearing. As you know, every year, uh, the state of Maryland calculates the amount of tax that would equate to, uh, constant yield, the existing tax dollars of last year. Um, we tend to run an ad as part of state law, is engaged on March sixteenth. And what I have up here on the screen is the ad that ran in the paper. Um, so, before we have the hearing, I just briefly want to explain where we're at and I'm actually gonna focus a little more on age here if you're gonna get that straight. So, according to state law, if there's any tax rates that we have that are in excess of the constant yield, we have to advertise and we have to publicly, so that's what we're doing with the county. Our assessments are up actually a half a percent from last year, so that resulted in the constant yield rate calendar, um, ninety-seven thirty-seven, um, per dollar. We're, we're actually at ninety-seven eighty, as you know, we produced a tax rate in each of the last five years, so that puts her in closer to that constant yield tax rate. Um, right now, when Cumberland and Luke County tax rate are below, um, the constant yield, the rest are just ever so split in the bubble as you can, as you can see it from the chart. The unincorporated rate, which is the one we have to advertise based on, that's all the residents that live outside of municipalities in the county, um, it, it actually resulted in taxes ninety-three thousand dollars in excess of the constant yield, so that's why we had to run the act. Uh, do you want to point out, I think the ad's actually, excuse me, a little bit misleading. Um, all in all, if you focus on the bottom rank number, if you can see it, we're collecting two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars less than we were, um, in prior years. Check that, please, the bottom number, two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand less in prior years. So, all in all, we're actually collecting less taxes than we did in the past. This is the state law and we kind of, a little bit of the technicality. So, then you just, just as you want us to, we'll continue to reduce the tax rate slowly, uh, we'll get closer and closer to the constant yield. And tonight is essentially our hearing, so if anyone's signed up to talk about this, now would be the time for the comment.
One, one person signed up on tax rate, is this the issue you want us to talk about? Mrs. Brett? Is this the issue you want us to talk about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight. Money is very important to me, as it is to you all too. I want to commend the county commissioners in the previous years, including Commissioner McKay. It's my understanding that you held to the constant rate, but I'm hearing different things tonight, so maybe, maybe you can straighten me out. I just want to say there are two ways, two elements to arrive at your property tax in this county. The one is the assessment. The state comes in and tells the county how much all of the property is worth. It does it every three years, so it rotates, and in that three years, it gets the whole county. The other element is the constant rate. So you, or the constant rate or the rate that you county commissioners set, and that's multiplied together, the value of your property plus times the constant rate. And we have a lot of retired people here, a lot, many, many on fixed income. They cannot, they cannot afford more taxes. They're taxing this, they're taxing that. The sewers, sewage bills went up. It's just everything is going up, everywhere. And I'm just speaking on their behalf, I don't, not as a representative, but it is hard sometimes to pay these bills and these taxes. So, and people have options. This county is a stone's throw from West Virginia and a couple of miles from Pennsylvania. And so my coworkers, when I was working, already have taken advantage of moving. And our census, as I understand it, is going down. And I think the Cumberland census is going down as well. And so without jobs and high taxes if it gets taxified, we're not going to be able to hold our, our population with consolidated schools, with consolidated hospitals. And I know a lot of these problems are difficult to deal with. So in, in finishing up here, I just want to appeal to our commissioners to keep the tax rate down to the constant yield. See, if you cannot have to raise it, I'm going to go into my paper here. You're talking about raising it ninety-three thousand eight hundred and fourteen additional dollars. It's a point four percent higher than the constant yield. I mean, that's in your proposal, and if you pass that, you know, that gives you the right to go ahead and do that. My proposal, my challenge is to you three gentlemen here, to keep it at the constant rate. We need to keep our population here, we're hoping for jobs, and our children stay here, and taxes are a big issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just use the microphone here, mention your name and your address, please.
New York City, Brandt, Bedford, Red, Cumberland, Maryland.
If I might, just to clarify, Mrs. Brandt references not ninety-three thousand dollar increase. She's writing it in part, that's the excluding towns one you see there, so that's the unincorporated areas. You're writing it actually does go up a little bit based on the tax rate proposal, but all in all, county law will actually collect two hundred and forty-six thousand, or sorry, two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars less than last year. So in the grand total, we are actually collecting less, moving the rate down. Because of tax difference, we probably always have some of them slightly above, but all in all, we are moving it down. We're the only county in the state that's gone down. I think there's only been one county in the last five years that's had one year of the tax decrease. We've had five straight. And it is small, but we're, I think these commissioners have committed to continuing to chip down at that rate, so. Hope that makes sense. It's kind of a confusing thing. It's a confusing state law that we have to follow to the, we have to send the entire act to the state, they have to approve it, so confusing topic. Any other questions?
Thanks, James.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, we'll move into our action agenda. Item number five, introduction of Code Home Rule Bill three dash fifteen. Mr. Rudd?
This is a post-introduction of a code bill. This could be a little bit confusing. So there's a provision in the county code dealing with something called the Nursing Home Board Valued in County that has absolutely nothing to do with the county's old nursing home we sold back in the sixties or whatever, when Lyons Manor Nursing Home was established. The legislature passed a public law line in Maryland that allowed the county commissioner to appoint a board to establish a nursing home, and then the commissioner stepped back and did not, they had no other responsibility once they created that board. That board created the Lyons Manor Nursing Home we all have next door, Sacred Harbor East Pit. They now want to transfer from, this board that the commissioner initially appointed has been self-perpetuating since then, basically they want to transfer the assets of that nursing home to a private nonprofit that will then go on about its business and get rid of this antiquated deal that was done back in the sixties. So this bill will be hearing next week where they'll explain more about it. Basically authorizes the transfer of the assets from the Nursing Home Board of Allegheny County to what is going to be the Lyons Manor nonprofit nursing home, basically. So that's what's being proposed. Today's an introduction, obviously it'll be hearing next week, and then you'll vote on later. Pretty much that's what it is, yes.
Technically, it'll be two weeks.
Do we need an introduction to?
Yes. Do we have a motion to move forward with this Code Home Rule Bill?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number six, Code Home Rule Bill four dash fifteen. Mr. Rudd?
All right. This is a bill authorizing the county commissioners to, this will be the introduction, it's proposed to be hearing on the ninth, where a lot more information will be provided. This is authorizing the sale of two parcels of real estate back here in the Riverside Industrial Park to a, an entity called Pete Harvest LLC.
And this is a topic we discussed, selling probably three, four weeks ago. Gentlemen, do we have a motion to move forward with Code Home Rule Bill four dash fifteen?
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Dorsey, you must think you're up next.
Hi, as you know, December twentieth, the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote to recommend that the county commissioners amend the county code parking standards to be nine by eighteen feet in dimensions. And that also applies to the Laveil zoning district. I think Mr. Rudd can introduce this.
Yes, as the commissioners are aware, there's this still separation between the Laveil zoning and the county zoning. What you did a couple of weeks ago was a code bill that amended the county zoning ordinance to deal with the parking. This is the finish up of the part, make it Laveil's parking consistent, which you all have control of that ordinance now. The hearings that already took place apply to this process as well. So today, before we give a motion to basically let the Laveil ordinance be amended to have the same parking standards as the county ordinance.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to move Laveil's zoning ordinance into line with the rules of the county?
Submove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just clarification as to the part.
So we don't move Laveil.
Okay, we'll move on to item number eight, Allegheny County twenty fifteen priority letter to the Maryland Department of Transportation. Ms. Sierra, would?
Hello, good evening. So the county's priority letter is to raise the local jurisdictions to express their local priorities for capital projects to MDOT. And these projects will be considered in MDOT's six-year capital planning, which is called the Consolidated Transportation Program. So representatives from the county and municipal municipalities met on March eighteenth and prioritized all fifteen items on our list. We came to an agreement, and I'm asking you to sign your letter, hoping you'll agree with it, and so you can set it along to MDOT. I request that the mayor's and the Western Maryland Elevation Sign Corps as well.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to take care of this lady for Sierra?
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we'll go to Cumberland Area Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Yes, so as part of the two thousand and fifteen Cumberland Organized Planning and Work Program, the city of Cumberland requested we take that to the intersection of Main Street, Baker Street, and Penner Street. And the plan, at least now we're trying to get it, I want to advertise to RFP to get a consultant to provide recommendations to interpret safety. I know there's a lot of businesses and cropping is kind of not very safe currently, so I'm requesting to put an advertisement with RFP.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And since you're on the roll, we'll move right into Transit Title Six, then?
Yeah, the transit has complied with Title Six of the restrictions on discrimination in health services and activities. Our Title Six plan includes discrimination policy, how to file a Title Six complaint, and the resolution process, and also how the transit deals with limited immigration provisions to populations. So this plan has gotten compliance, we just need the commission's approval. So I adopted the adopted plan.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to adopt the new plan?
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You see it? Dave, the constituent gentleman, please.
Commissioners, brief consent agenda this evening. First item, item number eleven, just deals with our annual exercise to approve the county partnership agreement with State of Maryland. Last but not least, it is our to unnote a bucket of votes, which is a two thousand and three, four, it's four, and currently dismembered to the Department of Natural Resources and Personal Services, and we'd like to so please step aside.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to approve the constituent gentleman?
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move into constituent comments. Mr. Wilmore?
I'm Kenneth Wilmore, I live at five one three Ford Avenue, Cumberland, Maryland. I'm here to speak on the budget for the year two thousand and fifteen. I was reading through it and I came across something that disturbed me quite adequately to my. It's unbelievable. The animal shelter in the last three years, two thousand and thirteen got two ninety-eight seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Two thousand and fourteen, it got three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Next year, fifteen, two thousand and fifteen, we're going to give them three hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars of the taxpayers' money for these people to pay the taxing dollars. We've got nothing in return on this shelter, nothing positive. The last four years I've been speaking up on the shelter, and I got accused of making unsubstantiated accusations. Over the past year, proved all that wrong. The shelter had, in these six weeks, they go out and pick up those nine dollars in dollar, they didn't do it. Total dysfunction. Now then, two thousand and thirteen up to two thousand and fourteen, in two thousand and fourteen, we had an increase of sixteen thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars. Now then, coming up in the year two thousand and fifteen, we got an increase of forty-five thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars. That's a three hundred percent increase. What in the world do these people need all this money for out here to shelter? Our city is overrun with cats and barking dogs. You've got to complain. I'll give you a real good example why I'm here. Two years ago, I went to be advisory board. The ladies, at the time, Mr. Perkins, she's now dead, she died in this side. Anyway, I thought it took their attention. I have a relative who has hoarding cats up on Irons Mountain. There's twenty-six cages of feral cats, total filth. Now, two years ago, I reported it to the advisory board like I was advised by Mr. McKay. To this day, nothing's happened, nothing. I went last week to the advisory board meeting, and I told him about it. Well, now then, you open it up. Well, you didn't throw out an apple today. So I get handed an apple today. What could that apple today be going to do? When I went to an advisory board meeting, Mr. Brubaker was standing right there, and I told him where they were, when, so it checked on. Two months later, the next meeting, I brought it up immediately to Mr. Darling, I said, what about the investigation on Irons Mountain with all the cats? And so she looks at Mr. Brubaker and she says, what's going on? Oh, it's under investigation. I said, how long have you been investigating? I said, it's only about six miles out to Irons Mountain. That's all we see. So far, I don't think I should have to throw out any apple today when I go to an official government board and tell them where a person's hoarding cats and dogs or cats. It's unbelievable. Now, I would like an explanation as to why we've got a three hundred percent increase on their budget, if I could get one.
Where did you come up with three hundred percent?
Well, from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and fourteen, they got a sixteen thousand two hundred and forty-two dollar increase. Forty-five thousand nine hundred and eighteen, that's, that's three times, that's three hundred percent increased.
Jason, you got a second?
Yeah, can I clarify just one thing? Twenty thirteen, there was actually two budgets for the animal shelter. There was the Animal Control Office and the Animal Shelter. When you add those two together, you get roughly three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
That's not the way it's listed in here.
Yeah, we consolidated the next year, just made one, one line. It shouldn't show it.
Anyway, that's still an increase.
It includes animal control.
Yeah, we consolidated animal control.
Where's this money coming from for the increase?
There actually wasn't an increase from two thousand and thirteen, it actually went down just a tick.
From, according to the Secretary of Defense, there's a sixteen thousand two hundred and forty-two dollar increase.
We simply consolidated as we should.
How's anybody supposed to make heads and tails of that shiny county? It's a joke. The taxpayer, I own one piece of property, every day I watch ten cats patrol my property. They don't, they don't bring cats in, they throw them back out on the road. I see no re, they should be reducing the budget for that place. They, they, they got all these bragging rights, all rescues, six thousand, ten thousand animals, and actually they're just putting them out on the road calling it rescue. But anyway, it's a disgrace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilmore.
Okay. Mind if, uh, next meeting, the first, the April ninth. Gentlemen, do you have any further comments, Jack?
Yeah, just on the constant yield rate, you know, how they make us advertise in the newspapers is they make us put the constant yield rate in of what it would be, but that's not really the tax rate. So as Mr. Ben explained, year to year, the tax rate's going down, you're going to see a decrease. On that side, no, it will depend on your assessment, and you may see an increase if your assessment goes up. And hopefully, what we're going to do in a couple of months is lower our threshold for home state eligibility from seven percent, hopefully down to four percent, so that more people will be eligible and you won't feel as much of an increase. And we have a friend from the city of Cumberland, Sean Hirschberger is here. Thank you for coming, and... Thank you for coming and thank you for working with us on some of these projects. And, you know, the footer building as well, that's take cooperation between the city, the county, and the delegation to get some delegation bills and some funds and we're looking forward to helping you on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Certainly, there is something I just want to talk about. I think I'm going to let it go until next week because we've had a very good meeting and it was great to honor Bobby Robinson, a local hero. But I do want to tell you something I was, got to see at our Community Relations Board meeting in the day at FCI. We was invited out for presentation and I'm with I and the sheriff and the regular people was there. And they put on a presentation of service dogs that is trained at FCI for people with disabilities. And I was kind of, I've never seen such a presentation, but after watching this, I was certainly impressed with what they can actually, I thought I was actually going to see a tax show or something like that. This is, was dogs that was trained to help people that can't stand, to stand up. They had them where they could turn the light switches on and off for people. The gentleman stood up for someone that has trouble getting dressed. The dog was able to take his jacket off and pick it up and put it on a chair for him. And when, and this is run through, it was impressive, they could take the shoes off these people. And it's all designed for service dog, or I'd never seen anything such as this. But when, and it's a sought-after job at FCI to become one of these handlers. And then when they get down and get under term, the people that handle the dogs are accredited as this. And then the dogs go over the country for an application where they suit the dog with a person of need. So, talk about something very impressive. Want to commend Warden Stewart on his efforts in keeping that in our community because that was, he really showcased something I did. Thank you.
I'll keep my remarks very short. This week, Dave and I attended a student forum at Frostburg University. That night, they were reaching out to county leadership and Frostburg City leadership to get more of a partnership, let's say, between government and the student body up there. Student body during the school year, actually makes up about fifty percent of the population of Frostburg that they feel they have, have no voice in the town. So, they're working to improve those relationships. They're going to have the same type forum for state government to meet with the student body and then they'll even have federal government meeting with the state body. I think that's really, really good. And then tomorrow afternoon, Dave and I will also be taking part in an event where they're doing a search for a new president at Frostburg University. I think it's very important that we end up with the proper person in that job. They have to see Dr. Gibraltar move along, I think he did a real fine job at that university, but he's moved along. So, they are, you know, they search for a new president at Frostburg and the county will, will be working on this university act. With that, if there's nothing else, we'll see everybody and pay the money.